Good evening. We're going to call tonight's meeting to order. We'll begin the meeting tonight with an invocation by Commissioner Mac McCray, and then he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll please rise.
Let us pray. Oh, most holy and eternal God, Father, the Creator, maker of all mankind, we pause this afternoon just to tell you thank you for all of your many, many blessings that we take for granted. As we finish your year 2014 and embark on a new year 2015, we ask that you continue to hold us in the Hall of Your Hand, continue to bless us, lead us, and guide us, and let us do what is pleasing in your sight, not only for this city, but in this great United States of America. In your name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir.
We'll go for agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I have one addition under announcements and community special presentations. You'll add an item D. We're going to recognize Boy Scout Troop 241, item D. Any others?
Mayor, I have one. It would be E. It would be to discuss and announce whether or not there would be a workshop meeting a week from tonight on the Casa Del Mar project.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion is unanimous. Informational items by members of City Commission. Tonight, I'll start with Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. This morning, I had the opportunity to visit and witness the dedication of Ocean Breeze West, and that was where 21 new homes has been built in our city. It started three years ago. Twenty-one families have moved in. Excellent, excellent project that was done jointly by not only the city, but also by the Boynton Beach CRA, as well as the faith-based CDC. Also, I don't want to be redundant and keep saying the same thing over and over again, but I would like to take this opportunity to say to each of you, the staff, citizens, and everyone within our great city, I wish all of you a happy, healthy, and a prosperous 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Merker?
Yes, thank you. I had the privilege of attending the New Year's at the Children's Museum. The excitement was the knowledge, the learning of children realizing from their parents what a new year meant. I'd also like Commissioner McCray said, "Healthy, happy, new year," and hopefully it's a year that brings in some fun, too. That's it.
Commissioner Cello.
You know, wishing you all a healthy, happy, prosperous new year. I did have the privilege attending the Unity Rally that was held in Wellington honoring our police and first responders. That was well-attended, and I think we should give a shout-out to all our public servants out there who protect us 24/7/365. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
On December 24th, I went to the League of Cities Luncheon, where they had a roundtable meeting, meet your legislature, and you sat down, and they went through what each city might be interested in pursuing from the state legislator in the coming year. And then today, I went to the dedication of Ocean Breeze West. And also, today at 4:00, I went to the Port of Palm Beach installation of the new board member Peyton MacArthur.
Thank you. Commissioner Cello, you've got something?
Yeah, just on a side note there, our city clerk Janet, who's had some minor surgery done, I would like to maybe make a suggestion that the commission send some flowers.
Absolutely.
Wishing her to quickly speed her recovery.
City manager, could you take care of that for us? Thank you. Okay, I also attended the Ocean West Bourbon Cutting this morning. It's just so impressive if you drive back up Seacrest there, if you all can remember back when that was a crime-ridden, drug-infested housing project with rats and stuff, and we tore it down. You could buy there, there's 21 beautiful, single-family homes. It's completely redone. I just think something we can, it shows when the city, working together, can really make something happen. I'm really, it's a dream come true, really. It looks beautiful. The other one, I did also attended the legislative affair that Commissioner Fitzpatrick spoke to. We got to have a one-on-one with each of the representatives and some of the senators there that day. I would like to just share two pieces of correspondence that I received, actually just today. To Mayor Taylor, "One of the features that brought me to Florida was the ocean. As Florida resident of Boynton Beach, I am attracted to Oceanfront Park and its many facilities. I would like to commend Lindsey Mauk, a 10-year lifeguard, for rescuing me when I was in trouble on January 4, 2015. Robert stood him." We thank you for that, and glad our lifeguards are doing the job, great job, helping save people. This next letter is from our governor, Rick Scott. Says, "Dear Mayor Taylor, as our state continues to mourn the recent loss of law enforcement officers, we are reminded that our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics face dangerous and uncertain situations every day. For their bravery and selflessness, we owe them our gratitude and appreciation. To honor our first responders who risk their lives every day to protect Florida, Florida's family, visitors, and businesses, I have declared next week, January 5 through the 9th, as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week. Throughout the week, I invite you to join me in encouraging Florida cities and community partners to take time out of their day to show first responders and their families how much we value their service to our cities, counties, and state. Florida First Responder Appreciation Week is a great opportunity to say thank you to the first responders who keep us safe. Thank you for your hard work every day, and I look forward to continuing to work with you to make Florida the number-one place in the world, to have a great job, grow a business, and raise a family. Sincerely, Rick Scott, Governor." I'd just like to say that I think I really appreciate that note, and I want to go out to our first responders, and if you pass by or run into one of our officers or firefighters out there this next week, just a simple thank you would go a long ways and mean a lot to them. So, thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements, community and special events presentations. The first announcement is the first City Commission meeting in March will be held on Monday, March 2, 2015, to accommodate the City Commission, who will be attending Palm Beach County Days in Tallahassee. So, in March, the first meeting, instead of on Tues, will be Monday, March 2. Okay, and now I have two proclamations, and the first one will be proclaim Monday, January 19th, as Martin Luther King Day. If someone is here to receive that, they'll meet me down here at this podium on my right. Your left, I'd appreciate it. Whereas the significant contributions made by the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. are recognized nationwide in that the 3rd Monday of January has been established as a national holiday in commemoration of Dr. King's birthday, January 15, 1929. And whereas Dr. King dedicated his life so that all Americans may enjoy the freedoms guaranteed, every citizen, under the Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution. And whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Birthday Celebration Committee of Boynton Beach, which combines numerous community organizations, municipalities, is playing a major role in the coordination of observances of this day by offering a variety of historical and cultural programs through the city. Now therefore, I gerrit Taylor by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim January 19, 2015, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, and call upon all citizens to rededicate themselves to advancing the cause of brotherhood and sisterhood among all people. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 6th day of January, 2015. Would you love to say something?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, on behalf of the citizens of Boynton Beach, we'd like to say thank you. The support that the city shows year after year says volume about the leadership of our city, and we'd just like to say thank you, and your efforts are much appreciated.
Thank you. Next, I have a proclamation for Robert E. Wells' Day. Is there someone here to receive this proclamation? If you'd come forward and join me here at this podium? Thank you. While you're coming forward, I'll go ahead and start the proclamation. Whereas Mr. Robert E. Wells, a merchant sailor from Cat Island in the Bahamas, settled in Boynton in 1890, where he and his wife Elizabeth raised three daughters, Aura, Fay, and Edna. Whereas in 1892, Robert and Elizabeth Wells helped found St. Paul's African Methodist Episcopal Church. Officially established in 1900, St. Paul's AME is the oldest church in the city. Whereas in 1896, Mr. Wells and other members of St. Paul's AME successfully petitioned Dade County School Board to provide a school for Boynton's black African-American children, originally called Boynton Colored School. It later became known as Pointiana Elementary. Whereas on April 14, 1920, Mr. Wells was a signatory of the document incorporating Boynton as a town. However, the land owned by him and the rest of the historic heart of Boynton was not recognized in the incorporation and was called Boynton Colored Town. Whereas in 1925, Mr. Wells platted the Robert Wells subdivision and built the main thoroughfare in the historic heart of Boynton called Wells Avenue and now known as Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. In addition to selling land and building houses, Mr. Wells donated lots to those in need, including St. Paul's AME, for building of a church. In time, Wells Avenue became a thriving downtown area for the black African-American community. Now therefore, gerrit Taylor by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, proclaim February 7, 2015, as Robert E. Wells' Day. In honor of his contribution to the settlement and development of Boynton Beach, and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to be affixed at Boynton Beach, Florida, the 6th day of January, 2015. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
Yes, I'd like to, Mr. Victor Norfus first. I'd like for Mr. Victor Norfus, our historian here, to speak first.
Good evening. All right, my vision ain't what it used to be 40 years ago. History is a story of the past, and history can be a story about our past successes and failures. It can be cherished, forgotten, or even denied. It all depends on who is telling this history and why. What I will give you is a brief history of Robert E. Wells. From 1880 to 1920, over 12,000 Bahamians settled in South Florida in what was then Dade County. In 1880, Robert Wells, a distinguished Bahamian merchant sailor, bought land in what was then North Dade County on the southern end of Lake Worth. In 1890, he built a beautiful, huge home for his wife Elizabeth Wells and cut a trail called Wells Avenue. He owned a large apartment building and a general store on Wells Avenue. Wells Avenue would later be renamed Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. He was born in Cat Island, and his wife Elizabeth was born in Bimini, the Bahamas. They had three daughters, the eldest, Aura, then Fay, and Edna. Aura had one daughter, Juanita Wells Wright, who is the mother of Minister Bernard Wright. Robert and Aura Wells are the grandparents of Minister Bernard Wright. Robert Wells was a very religious, caring man of high moral character. One of the first things he did after building his home was establish a place to worship God. On February 5, 1892, St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church was established for the residents of the then-South Lake Worth area. Now it's Boynton. At first, the congregation met at Robert Wells' home until a church was actually built. In 1894, St. Paul AME Church was built on a northeast corner of US 1 and Boynton Beach Boulevard. In 1925, the city passed segregation laws, creating Boynton Colored Town, which separated blacks from whites. The residents were forced to move to Wells Avenue, and they sold their lands to white residents according to the segregation laws at that time. The city legally forced the congregation to move the church to Wells Avenue. They loaded it on a church wagon and moved it on Wells Avenue. The congregation followed crying, singing, and praising to God all the way. That is why Wells Avenue was now the main street for what was then called Boynton Colored Town. Robert E. Wells, and this is dealing with Pointiana, was an educated and intelligent man who knew the value of a good education, like he had gotten in the Bahamas. He wanted the black children to have the opportunities to learn to read, write, add, and subtract. In 1896, he and other members of St. Paul AME requested a black teacher from the then-Dade County School Board. And on September 7, 1896, the school board sent a black teacher from West Palm and established Boynton Elementary School. The teacher stayed with the Wells family and other residents during the school session and went back to West Palm when the school was out. It was originally a one-room schoolhouse on Federal Highway near 3rd Avenue. In 1925, again, due to the segregation laws that were enacted, it was, the school was physically moved to Wells Avenue, and the name of the school was then changed to Boynton Colored Elementary. This was distinguished from Boynton Elementary because the mail was getting confused. So, in order to determine which school was getting the mail, they called it Boynton Colored The name of the school was changed again after 1963 civil rights laws were passed outlawing segregation. The name was changed to Pointiana Elementary, after the many Pointiana trees that were on the property at that time. In reference to the town of Boynton and incorporation, Robert Wells was a fair-minded, non-racist man and was very civic-minded. He knew what advantages and economic opportunities a town would bring for the residents. On April 14, 1920, Robert Wells, along with eight other black residents and other residents of Boynton Beach, attended the documents and signing incorporation of Boynton as a town. In 1920, Robert Wells was actually 52 years old, and his property, although, was not included at that time. In 1920, there were no segregation laws, just as there are today. So, many of the blacks and whites residents lived side by side along Federal Highway. At that time, they farmed the rich muck soil along the intercoastal waterway and planted fruit trees, orchards, vegetable gardens, from the Boynton Hotel to Federal Highway. Again, after 1925, all that changed, as the residents were moved from that area, their farms were sold. It is to note that some families, like Reverend Butler, who founded St. John Missionary Baptist Church, was violently forced to move from Boynton Beach Boulevard, where he lived at the time, to Wells Avenue. The city created Boynton Colored Town from Wells Avenue to Canal and from Federal Highway to Seacrest. Since blacks were no longer allowed to attend city commission meetings, they created their own council for the town and called it the Boynton Negro Civic League. Robert E. Wells was elected the leader, and other residents were elected to the Negro Civic League Council. They would petition the city to address various community issues of street paving, lighting, electricity, water, sewage, and other community issues that the city was in charge of. The league also organized community celebrations, like the fair, circus, Christmas and Easter sporting events, and holidays or celebrations that were held on Wells Avenue, which is why today we still have celebrations on Martin Luther King Boulevard in the same area. Right now, there's a store and empty lot there. After 1963, the civil rights laws were passed outlawing segregation and Boynton Colored Town. The Boynton Negro Civic League was dissolved and forgotten, but can still be found in old city commission records. Robert Wells owned land and business near Federal Highway, and in 1925, the city plotted his property as the Wells subdivision, along with other prominent African-Americans like the Meeks family, the Andrews family, and the Meeks and Andrews subdivisions. Boynton Colored Town was segregated, but the residents were included in the town of Boynton. Although they were called subdivisions by many whites, some referred to it as, the black subdivisions, as quarters. And as most of you may not remember, during slavery time, blacks lived in areas designated as slave quarters. Wells Avenue became the main street with black businesses, churches, Masonic lodges, homes, schools, entertainment, and much, much more. The heart of Boynton became a vibrant, thriving community with a Boynton Negro Civic League thanks to Robert E. Wells. So, in recognition of the contributions of Robert E. Wells to the settlement and early development of our city, the city of Boynton has proclaimed February 7 as Robert E. Wells' Day. Now, we should always remember Robert E. Wells and celebrate our history. And as I said in the beginning, history is a story of the past successes and failures. History must be cherished and never forgotten or denied. History will always depend on who is telling the story and why. This is my story of Robert E. Wells. He was a caring and educated Christian black pioneer of Boynton Beach, Florida. Victor Durrell Norfus.
I'd like to thank the commission, the Historic Resource Board, for their approval of this research project that is still ongoing. We have established and corroborated great many facts, but for this proclamation, the history of the black community of this town would have been lost and untold. There would be no written account. This proclamation gives rise to a true, correct, and accurate account of the history of the black African community and Boynton as a whole. History, the knowledge of it, is paramount, imperative for any and all people, as it is the nexus, the connection of a people which produces solidarity. When we know who we are and who our folks are, notwithstanding their accomplishments, just the knowledge of the same breeds pride and strength. It is the impetus that catapults us to greater heights. For my people perish for the lack of knowledge, says the Lord. History, the importance of it. This proclamation officially establishes the foundation upon which a true and accurate history of the city of Boynton Beach can now be built. The records can be set straight, and we can now be recorded and included in the history of this wonderful town I call my home, and is my home until eternity. It's my heritage, my family's legacy, Boynton, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and the heart of Boynton specifically. The historical nature carries its own weight, and it requires our recognition and attention. What a great day for my family's posterity this night is. How easily it could have been lost and untold. The reason we have chosen February the 7th, because February has been designated Black History Month, and 7 is God's perfect number and the number of completion of all things in view. And that is why we have chosen February the 7th Day, because of its spiritual significance. Wells Avenue was always a live street, always was viable, and so we are asking for revitalization and restoration down this corridor, which is a heritage and a legacy for the Wells family. I thank you all for your listening here, and tonight, we have established some history that need to go into the books and on the Boynton Beach television station in its entirety and in its accuracy. To God be the glory. I wish you all a happy New Year's.
I just want to thank you, gentlemen, for sharing that history with us about the Wells family. I can tell you, as I enjoy dual citizenship, I also enjoy citizenship in the Bahamas Islands, and I can tell you that the Wells family name is well-known and respected throughout the Bahamas Islands. And now, with this proclamation, I hope that Boynton Beach is also showing some respect to the Wells family for their contributions to this city. Thank you again for your input. Thank you. I would now ask our communications director, Eleanor Cassell, if you'd join me here. Last September, Boy Scouts Troop 241 cleaned up the Marina Mangrove area. Together with their scoutmaster, Mark Cordesum, they worked diligently to collect garbage surrounding the docks that filled 25 large bags. Tonight, we would like to recognize each one of one for their services. Please step forward as I call your name. Roddy Booth. Is it Roddy or Roady? Roddy? Roddy Booth? Okay. You want to do each one individually? Do you want, we want to stand right up here, because we want to get a picture with you, okay? Ready? Leo Bruner. Kevin Castro. Alex Cortez. Nick Cortez. Robert Galvin. Dylan Pabbits. Ronnie Weber. Max Wilford. Noah Wilford. And Joshua Wilford. One moment. In recognition, certificate of appreciation to Mike Cortez, our scoutmaster, in recognition of participation in environmental cleanup on September 27, 2014, at Marina Village.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing will be the workshop discussion. City attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Following the last City Commission meeting, there was a request for a workshop meeting to discuss the Casa Del Mar project before it reaches the commission for review of the development orders. We had tentatively set a date of July, excuse me, January 13, 2015, at 5:00 PM. That's before the next week's CRA meeting, but the actual setting of a workshop meeting requires commission action, not administrative action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Excuse me, before we move forward, Casa Del Mar, okay, about the workshop. Okay, we requested that they meet with the citizens first, before they come back to us. I have received numerous emails from citizens saying, "When are they going to meet with us?" I think they should meet with the citizens that it would affect first, and then bring it back to us as a workshop. Right now, the developer has not done what we have required and voted for them to do, and that was meet with the citizens first. So, I will offer a motion that we do not hold a workshop until they meet with the citizens.
I'd second that motion.
I have a motion, second, that the developer meets with the citizens. I guess this is another meeting, because I know there have been some meetings with citizens, but evidently they were going to meet again after our last discussion.
After they made their changes, they're supposed to send it back.
And that hasn't taken place, according to that.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Show the motion is unanimous. The other question I had on that while we're on it, I think we were scheduled for that to come to the commission on the 20th of January, and city manager, will some of us be in Tallahassee on a date?
Yes, sir. You and Commissioner Merker and myself will be absent from the commission meeting on the 20th.
Okay, so two of us will not be here. It's up to the commission. I don't know how this is going to work with them meeting with the citizens. We can still make the 20th, but does the commission still want to meet the 20th with two of us absent?
No, sir. No, sir.
You'd like to have the whole commission present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. Okay, then I'll need a motion, I guess, to reschedule.
Motion to reschedule the meeting.
To the first meeting in February.
The first meeting in February.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous.
We'll make certain that all that is communicated to all of the interested parties.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to public audience. Anybody in the public who wish to address the Commission items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you give your name and address for the record and try to limit your comments
I am Gary L. Fishman of 3504 Diane Drive, Boynton Beach. Been here for 23 years, same house. Honorable Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, and others. I have always loved my City of Boynton. My neighborhood that I am the acting president of is currently facing a threat of a park the majority of us who know the facts don't want. There are those who desire the park who have been dishonest and misleading. You know who you are, and we do. The other plans for this land are not for development in the near or distant future. The land to the north, the same. It is zoned for single-family, large homes, which the city excitedly approved. The lies, rumors being spread, the owners of developer, a lie. Low-income homes and asphalt jungle, also a lie. In America, when you desire something, we have the right to do so, but, and a big but, you must be honest. I have here 134 names on a petition. It can rise as high as 1,000. These individuals live in the pathway in close proximity to where the park is going to be. Others may have petitions, but I, we challenge their authenticity as to what knowledge was given to the signers. A petition is absolutely worthless if it is falsely presented and does not really let people know what the park is all about. B.E. Aerospace took over the Old Grimes plant and wanted to expand it years ago. We, as a neighborhood and with the support of our city, were able to stop the expansion. The same increased traffic, increase in crime, loitering, wear and tear on our old bridges would be catastrophic. Now, the last issue, the waste of taxpayer dollars. This low price when the dust settles will be huge and will continue to be a gigantic burden for the city and us taxpayers for eternity. In closing, there are good people, neighbors, that have been fed the wrong information. With the correct, true information, you'll see the park is dead wrong for this area. I, we plead with our mayor, Commissioners, and anyone else up on the dais or in the audience, please reconsider dropping your bid for the park. If the park does pass, it will force our neighborhood to utilize Plan B. I truly thank you for allowing me to speak today. I understand that three of the five of you up on the dais are leaning towards no park. Thank you. I hope the others will follow suit. Over my right shoulder, you have your mission statement. And if you follow your mission statement, this park is very much ill-advised.
Thank you.
And right to the note.
Right on the button.
And thank you.
Thank you.
And a great city and Happy New Year to everyone.
Hello, Daniel Spotts, 805 North Federal Highway. I'm not sure if you realize it, but the FEC Railroad has accepted delivery of brand-new Big Red train engines. These are bigger, louder, and probably stronger than the old ones. The trains appear to exceed Boynton Beach noise codes even without the horns. And the horns are blowing after 10:00 PM and before 6:00 AM in violation of city code. According to Governor Rick Scott and the President of the FEC, the amount of cargo traffic on these lines will triple by next year, thanks in part to improvements paid for by All Aboard Florida. That could mean 30 freight trains per day in addition to the 32 passenger trains per day going at 80 miles per hour nonstop through downtown Boynton Beach. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but since June of last year, when All Aboard announced plans to begin construction of their passenger rails, by my count, we are now up to 18 businesses that have closed or moved from the downtown, including most recently Wind Dixie. None of these have been replaced. This does not even include another two dozen locations that left before June or were newly built and never rented, never occupied. Businesses seemingly refuse to invest in downtown Boynton unless they get a subsidy from the city or the CRA. Vivian Brooks, head of the CRA, claims that there is actually a shortage of available retail space in downtown Boynton, but Marina Village and Ocean Walk are more than half empty. Las Ventanas and now the Wind Dixie Shopping Center are more than half empty. Casa Costa is 100% empty. Yet Vivian is, quote, "perfectly comfortable" asking for $4.3 million for the 500 Ocean Project from CRA through taxes that are on struggling local businesses now. For seven months, I have been asking, begging for this Commission for help. You have repeatedly ignored the downtown business community. You do not seem to understand that we actually have a problem here. How long do you think that the backyard restaurant, for example, can survive as an open-air restaurant next to the railroad tracks with 60 trains a day? My business is barely hanging on because there's virtually no foot traffic in downtown Boynton Beach. I doubt that even Walmart will be able to remain once the new facility further west is complete, and they have to deal with 60 trains a day at the railroad crossing right in front of their parking lot. Can we please start coming up with some solutions to this very serious problem? Thank you.
What is your business, sir?
We have a marine aquarium store, and we also do internet. Thankfully, our internet sales are keeping us afloat, but the past six, seven months, retail sales have dropped dramatically. I personally think that the railroad has a big part of it, and the fact that we are losing more and more businesses, it's a dead zone. We're cutting back on Saturdays, which used to be our busiest day, because there's nobody coming downtown, even on Saturdays. It's, in my opinion, a disaster. But...
Thank you.
That's all.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Black, and I live at 321 Southwest First Avenue. I've lived in the City of Boynton Beach since 1988, and I've lived in my current home since January of 2000. I bought the home I live in now for the beautiful property that it was. It had many beautifully mature trees and plants. The house was a disaster. I have worked the last 15 years restoring the house. It was built in 1927. In early December, I was approached by the City of Boynton Beach to remove trees on my back property line. I said I would think about it. I talked to several people from the city, and the story kept changing about what they wanted to do and what they were going to replace my mature trees with. I decided it was Christmas season. I had enough to do. I would deal with it after the holidays. Monday, December 15th, started out as a good day. My son, whose active army, was coming home the next day after being overseas for 16 months. I went to work. I received a text from my friend who was staying in my house. The city was cutting down my trees. I had not signed the permission slip. She went out and told Duffy's they were cutting my trees without the owner's permission. They said they had permission from the City of Boynton Beach. I called Felix, who I first talked to at the city. They still were cutting my trees. I left work. I came home. I told them they were on my property, and they were cutting my trees. My beautiful, mature trees were all laying on Ocean Avenue. I did not give permission to cut my trees. They were still telling me they had permission from the City of Boynton Beach. Felix showed up when first approached me and said that if I signed the permission slip, that he would make it better for me. Duffy's just destroyed my trees, did not listen to anybody telling them that I did not have permission. These trees were 100% on my property. To make matters worse, the next day when they came to remove the stumps, they removed all the plants behind the trees and cleared my property back 20 feet, cleaned it all out. They not only did that, but I had dead wood back there that I used for my firewood. Mr. Duffy, as a favor to me, removed it all from my property. My backyard is now totally exposed to Ocean Avenue. Dirt is flying through my house. My beautiful forest and meadow are gone. I can't even walk in my backyard without crying.
Go ahead and try to wrap it up.
I just want to know why the City of Boynton Beach destroyed my property. Why? Because, you know, right now, you lost a citizen of Boynton Beach because I have no rights as a private property owner. I don't want to live in this city, and you have stumped all over my rights.
We do have a major utility program, of course, you know, going on in that neighborhood there. We'll look into it and see what the deal is.
I'm on my property, though.
My name is Edward Glick. I live at 2620 Northeast First Court, commonly known as Village Royale in the Green. I want to thank the City Manager and Mr. McCray for attending a meeting a couple of weeks ago at our condominium project, condominium location. All Aboard Florida, I have personal views about it, but what I want the County Committee to deal with is that there is technology available should this project go through, and of course, the increases, gentlemen talked about it, freight trains, to make the crossings secure enough so there would not necessarily be the horns. In District 2, where I live, off of Gateway, we here and have lived for many years, I've lived there for many years, and it's been a way of life. Maybe the economy's picking up, something's going on. There's certainly more horns now, but based upon what the projections are, it may be unbearable to our way of life. Now, I would like the Committee, whether, you might have dealt with this, I get my reports from my friend Jackie, who comes from our community, but if you haven't, I would hope that you would deal with at least this aspect of the prospects of this All Aboard being approved and that they can eliminate, because of the security that they can provide at Gateway and other crossings, the ability to pass without blowing their horns. And make a motion that you agree with that concept for all of those folks who are affected by the, within the distance of that noise. Thank you.
Just for your information, we have already been addressing that problem, and you're right, there is technology available to improve those crossings where they become quiet zones, where they would not have to use their horns when they pass through. So we're ready to work with the League of Cities and working through to get the money to have that done.
Just one last word. Broward County and many of those communities have dealt with that pretty forcibly, from what I've read. Now, All Aboard is a private company. I'm not sure they're mandated to do that. I think...
We're working with us. They've come here, they've talked to us, we've worked with them about making quiet zones.
Good deal. Make them do it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Doty Glass. I'm with Gentile Glass Holloway O'Mahony. And because this is my only forum to address you, I just wanted to clarify some things for the record on Casa Del Mar. We've had several workshops with the residents, and we had also a meeting with them as well with staff to clarify issues and had requested our workshop so that we would have an opportunity to create a public forum in another location so that the discussion could occur, as we believe we've addressed most of the comments that have been presented. We've had, since the Council tabled our petition, additional ongoing conversations with some of the individuals that are most affected in the property. The request for the workshop was to give another venue because our meetings have been, as you know, at K. Hovnanian's office, and we were trying to create an opportunity for more vetting and more discussion. One of our meetings was with staff, and we provided that so that staff could also address concerns that were expressed regarding stormwater and other issues. The whole point of the workshop was to be able to encourage more conversation. We are trying to have it. The problem that we have is that some folks are showing up at the city. We want it to give another venue. We've had multiple workshops. It was requested that we continue to have discussions, to make changes, and we have done that to address what we thought we could. And I wanted to clarify that on the record again because we have not had an opportunity to have any conversation, nor could we have any conversation on the discussion on the workshop.
Thank you. I know that, yeah, one moment. I know that you have had meetings, and then the latest thing we've had is certain individuals are calling saying, you did make changes to the original plan, and you've tried to make some adjustments, et cetera, but they haven't had a chance to look at them or know what you changed or to be able to give you their input on it. That's what we're being told. So just for your information, that's so, I guess there's, maybe you've met with some and others weren't there or whatever, you know?
Well, our remaining issues were related mostly with the adjacent property owners, and that's what we were trying to address with them.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I have an email from Nicole Bueller dated January the 2nd, also Nancy Barber Cole dated January the 2nd. Also want to have from the doctor and his wife dated like the 31st, and I'm just saying, you know, I go by what is in writing, you know, black and white speaks, and I'm just saying, you know, they tell me that, you know, you all have not reached out to them. So until you all reach out to them, you know, I wish you all would. I'm just saying.
And we have reached out to the doctor and his wife.
Well, can you reach again and let me know what is going on with your reaching? I'm sorry.
We have been doing that repeatedly.
Thank you.
May I say something? I had the opportunity of speaking with your attorney, Martin Perry. I'm hearing mixed statements from both sides. I'm agreeing with you in the sense I know it's being reached. One of the attorneys for one of the people who live in one of the residents I briefly spoke to, I know Martin Perry was trying to reach out to him. It seemed there was a mixed message, or one could not reach out to the other. They were both attorneys. My reason for voting again for the delay is I think that both parties have to dot the i and cross the t before we, the Commission, can vote. And I'm not hearing from both sides, simple statements like we had. What I did hear originally was that both sides realized that this development would go forward, understanding it would go forward. However, certain amendments had to be done. Speaking with Mr. Perry, I sensed some were. I'm waiting for the other side's attorney personally to get back to me because what he said to me that because of the holiday season, he was that busy. So again, my reason for the delay is let's dot the i, cross the t, and then when we do vote, it's the correct vote.
Well, as the City Attorney pointed out earlier in the meeting, he's going to contact both sides and try and get this ironed out for the Commission to make sure that everybody got met.
I think I just said that.
And we appreciate that. And again, one of the difficulties is we don't have a common ground right in that locations. For some residents, this winds up being common ground.
We'll just have to pick a spot that everybody can be at.
If I may offer, so we can maybe prevent the continued back and forth, he said, she said, I'm going to ask staff, as Jim said, you know, we'll reach out to all the parties and facilitate another meeting, perhaps in our library program room or what have you, to offer one more meeting for whoever to come.
We're happy to do that.
Continue to air it out. I don't know that all issues will be resolved. However...
At least they'll have their say.
Right. And then we'll stop the back and forth stuff.
Sounds good.
We appreciate that, and we don't want to put more burden on staff, but we appreciate a third party being there to hear as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Norwood, representing the Martin Luther King Celebration Committee. I bring you greetings on behalf of the City of Boynton Beach MLK Committee. The Planning Committee is very excited about this year's celebration activities. While we acknowledge the late start, we believe working in partnership with the city and having a can-do attitude, we can make this year's celebration one of the best. This year's activities, tentatively, because we're waiting for permits, include a parade through the city ending at the amphitheater. Once at the amphitheater, there will be a short program informing the attendees of programs and opportunities that exist in the city for all residents. The evening will conclude with a prayer vigil for our city, state, and country. Also planned is the annual award banquet on MLK Sunday, January 18th at Ben Venuto's Restaurant at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $55. If you have not heard, one of our guest speakers for the evening is one of our own City Commissioners, Commissioner Dave Merker. This year's MLK celebration will conclude on MLK Monday with the Day of Service Community Service Project. Service Project. In keeping with the National MLK Celebration theme, the color of unity, we would like to spotlight the diversity of our city. To accomplish this, we need your help. Please support us in the effort by telling your friends and family members about what is being planned, then come out and participate. Again, to make this year's celebration a success, we need your support and participation. If anyone, especially students, that are interested in participating on the Planning Committee, please call myself at (561) 254-2106. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to your participation in our annual MLK event. And remember, you can't spell community without unity.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before Mr. Norwood leave, I know that it's late, because I spoke with you last night, okay, but your parade, I'm just saying, you was trying to come down Seacrest Boulevard. We need to have it for the record that that is a county road, and what we're going to do is probably ask the chief and staff if they could get another avenue so that we don't block off a, on a Saturday, busy, so that we can all agree to take another route to get to the amphitheater. It'd be safer for the citizens and for all of us instead of coming down Seacrest. Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Norwood, I apologize for today. I had an emergency, but I will call you tomorrow so we can follow up on your conversation you had with Ms. Crusell today.
Thank you very much.
I'll call you tomorrow so we can talk a little bit more.
You mean we have to spend $55 to hear this?
Hi, my name is Robert Gallagher. I live on Diane Drive, 3724 Diane Drive. I'm probably the closest one to the proposed buying of the parkland, and I'd like to go on record as being opposed to it mostly because of the ingress and egress issue involved with it, and the expense that would be involved with either bringing people over from the dog park through a, through a bridge, or bringing them over underneath the I-95 pass. I think it'd be a big expense for the city of Boynton for very little gain. And then I've got another personal issue that I was listening to, and I probably don't need to expound in this, but it seems to me that it, that if you put that park out there, and I don't know if I have the right information or not, but if you put something up for bid and you lose the bid, then you've lost the bid. And by that right alone, I would say that you, and I don't have any interest in that park except for I live close, I live very close to it. I live right on the corner of Diane Drive and right across from Rel. Reeves. And it seems to me like if you lost the bid, you lost the bid, and you shouldn't be getting that area if you lost the bid. I may not understand that issue right, but if nothing else, I am opposed to all of the traffic that would be coming down my street to go to it, and I know it's an ingress and egress issue. So just like to go on record for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Monica Dvorsny, 2625 Lake Drive North. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. As you're all aware, December 2nd, we were supposed to have the first reading for the Casa Del Mar project. Commissioner Merker did ask for it to be tabled for the developers to reach out to the neighborhood of Lakeside Garden, and we are a neighborhood, a very tight-knit neighborhood. I would, we're practically family. Until this point, the developers have not reached out to the neighborhood of Lakeside Garden. A week prior to that meeting, a week before December 2nd, Marty Perry, which is their attorney, my attorney and I, and my husband, met privately in a room. It was an hour and a half meeting, it was very expensive. The developers well aware how the Dvorsny's feel and what we need. The only way they've reached out to us is a one-liner from Marty Perry to my attorney saying what the Dvorsny's want. They're very well aware of what we want, and I would like for them to reach out to the neighborhood because the Dvorsny's aren't the neighborhood. We're a beautiful community of about 40 residents. So I just want to go on record saying they haven't reached out to the neighborhood. So we look forward to meeting together.
Well, you've heard tonight, there's going to be a meeting set up, so I hope you can attend.
Right.
Because that's going to be it. You need to attend, right?
Okay, thank you.
I reside at 3842 South Lake Drive, Boynton Beach. I have met, I have with me some flash drive, if you want, at the end of the meeting, I will give it to you. It is a short 11-minute video of the county commissioners' meeting on October 21st, in which our two city commissioners, along with a third person of theirs, make a case to the county to sell the law to the city for a park. Our city commissioners have given misleading, wrong information to this person that I'm a developer, that I'll put low-income tall housing on the land. Based on this information, the Delray residents wants a park. The survey was done in Delray, not in the Boynton residents. One city commissioner wrongly quotes me as a developer. I'm not a developer. I work for IBM. I have lived in the same neighborhood for 30 years. I love this city and the county. My children, both of them, were born and brought up here. They were, they went to the public school, one became medic doctor.
There we go.
And they went to IP school, and both have become full-fledged medical doctors. From the video, you will see the county is going to put certain condition before they sell the property to the city. What, if you do not build the park within a certain period, the city will have to give back the land to the county. Probably county is aware of the fate of the scout, Girl Scout Park, which we are being having for last 20 years. The county gave us free of charge, but there's no park. I have visited recently Forest Hill Park, there was no person there, empty beer bottle. Instead of wasting money in new park, give it to the person who uses it. Hazel Lasser Park and Bill Trump's boat, Trump's. You can see the resident enjoying it, and they will praise you, and they will like you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Blas.
Dr. Piotr Blas, 113 West Tara Lakes Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida, 33436. Okay. So Happy New Year, first of all, to everybody. I just came back from Warsaw, Poland, and Lima, Peru, and I think they all love Boynton and maybe will be sister cities in the future. A couple of things. One is simply to remind the commissioners that under Florida law, you know, it's about tax time again, people who are over 65 years old and who have resided more than 25 years in a single home can be exempted from taxes. That is up to the commission, to the city, to decide. If you decide to do it, fine. If not, that is, as you know, I'm running for mayor, that's in my platform, so you'll have to compete with that. That is definitely a law, and I think it's one that a lot of people would like in this city. So let me just remind you, this has been brought up before. I hope it's clear. The second issue is somewhat general, and I hesitate to bring it up, but I will bring it up. First of all, we, today we congratulate Rick Scott, who was inaugurated as governor of Florida, and so he beat me, he had $100 million. But there is one thing that I want to bring to your attention. The entire vote for the governor was about 2.5 million votes, and there are 25 million people living in Florida. So increasingly, 10% of the population decides the elections. Because of that and other irregularities, I contested the election. According to law, there are ways to do it. And the sad part is that the contest is simply ignored. So I am afraid we are acting like a banana republic, and I don't like that. And I'm saying it in front of the press, and I assure you that not a single line will appear tomorrow. So perhaps we want it this way, but I don't. So I'm continuing to run and stand up for democracy, and don't be surprised if I run for president in 2016. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Before we, you know, close public audience, I was looking for Mr. Michael Byrd to be here, but the East Boynton Wildcat 2014 Awards Ceremony Special Guest Invite. Good afternoon, Boynton Beach City officials. This is the official invite for our end-of-the-season 2014 Awards Ceremony. You are cordially invited to celebrate our wonderful 2014 season with us at our annual awards ceremony. This will take place on Sunday, January 11. Special guest red carpet entrance will be from 2:00 to 2:30 p.m. Family and student athletes, red carpet entrance, 2:30 to 3:00 p.m. The ceremony starts from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. This will be at the Boynton Beach Civic Center, and they will be awarding honor roll athletes, coaches of the year, partnership and sponsorship awards, most valuable cheerleaders, most valuable players, most spirited cheerleader, most improved players, participation awards, and the 2014 Heisman Award winners. And they said that they know that we're very, very busy, but they'd like for us to put this on our calendar that will take place on January 11. Thank you. The East Boynton Wildcat Staff, Michael Byrd. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to address the commission and the public audience?
How you doing? My name is Taylor Levy. I'm a resident of Delray Beach and a business owner in Boynton Beach. On October 21st, 2014, I spoke in behalf of concerned neighbors and over 75 residents of Boynton Beach and Delray in a petition we signed against the continued development of the four-acre parcel that was awarded to Boynton Beach. I haven't had the opportunity to meet Mr. Kalra, and I'm not sure what the primary intentions of the development of the property are. But we, as a group, are here to discuss that raping and pillaging the land, as the woman had spoken earlier, and ripping down the trees, the mature trees that are here and protecting us from 95 and protecting us from sound barriers, and having a space that the residents and citizens of Boynton Beach and the surrounding areas can enjoy is not something that I'm for, and I'm sure not something most of the residents are for. I think we owe it to ourselves to preserve pristine land parcels like this that are available for our children and our children's children. Each year, those available lands diminish, and we put up homes, and we expand areas that shouldn't be, and we're losing prime real estate for our residents. So I'm not for the development, I'm for the preservation, and I think a park would be a great thing to have there, but I'm sure that the houses and the increased revenue that Boynton Beach would get from there could be spent somewhere else. These are small areas that are allotted for residents, and if there is a bridge that we can gap from Delray to Boynton Beach, now's the time to do it. There's an organization called Human Powered Delray, which is planning to connect the waterways of Boynton Beach and Boca and some of the surrounding neighborhoods on a bike trail and a walkway, where people can enjoy a safe area, where they can work their way from town to town and enjoy safe harboring away from the vehicles and ride their bikes and be with their families. So I think this is a great opportunity to link the group, and I'm, again, just against the development of the property.
Thank you.
So.
Anybody else wish to address the commission this time? Item's not on the agenda. Seeing none?
I would just like to make a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
On the railroad, the MPO is definitely funding all quiet zones throughout the county. They've got a package deal with All Aboard Florida, so All Aboard Florida is going to make the improvements, but they're doing it in bulk, so there will be no whistles, horns after those quiet zones are put in. The second point on that is the concern about higher, greater freight, and that is the concern of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and they are working to try to shift some of that rail freight to the CSX, which runs along I-95. And the way they've done it is they've purchased links, I believe, around Port Everglades, because that's where the new freight would initiate, and then returning back to the FEC between Magnolia Park and Jupiter. So part of this is to facilitate Tri-Rail, so Tri-Rail could be extended up until Jupiter area. My understanding now is the FDOT, FDOTT, on behalf of Tri-Rail owns the land and rails of the CSX track from Miami up to around Magnolia Park. So there is a decent chance that'll happen. Of course, the FEC and CSX are strong competitors, so any sort of cooperation is a new idea, and so nobody's guaranteeing it will happen. But there is, the planners are aware of the issue, and they're doing their best to make this happen where there would be less traffic and more passenger traffic through the inner cities on the FEC. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Administrative, there are no appointments tonight. Takes us to consent agenda with the commission's approval. I would like to pull item E from the consent. I have a question. Is the commission okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. I just have one question on my, to me, it's approved the utilization of the State of Florida contract, loose police distributors contract for the purchase of ammunition, guns, gun parts, and miscellaneous cleaning equipment and supplies on an ad needed basis. My question there is, when you look back in fiscal 12, 2012, the, was $8,500. Fiscal 13 was $17,100. Fiscal 14 was $46,000, and this year, for 2015, we're asking for $64,500. I'm just wondering, it seems like such a tremendous increase, what's happening here?
Tim Howard, Director of Finance. That's one vendor that the Police Department utilizes for the purchase of various ammunition. So when we did the agenda item to get the approval to use that vendor on an as-needed basis, we just showed you what we spent with that one particular vendor. But overall, for ammunition, they spent about $65,000 a year, which has been consistent over the last few years, but it's been split up between vendors. So what we did was we asked for the authority up to 65 as an estimate, but only a portion will be spent with this, but it could be the full 65, and it could be $20,000 because there's multiple vendors they buy from.
Well, this was just this vendor, and now we're going with just this vendor.
Right. And you'll probably see another one that's from another law enforcement supply company that they'll purchase supplies from, and it just depends on which one has the better price during the year.
So basically, it's around the same every year, just a matter. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
Second.
Motion's a second discussion.
Just a couple of questions. Tim, what happens to the ammunition they don't use? What, is it, does it have a shelf life, or?
Gunfire damage.
Training?
Come on down.
That's a technical question.
Thanks. Jeff Katz, Police Chief. Actually, it does have a shelf life with the humidity in South Florida. We can't count on the primers to actually continue to be reliable. So we usually do go through that amount of ammunition and training over the course of a year and issuance. We continually issue new ammunition to officers on the street as well to make sure that that's reliable. So, and of course, we've been in a decade and a half of wars, so ammunition has been very expensive.
Long's just used for training, I'm happy.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there, I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, show the motion to unanimous. Thank you. Takes us to bids and purchase over $100,000. Award the two-year bid for dumpster repairs, bid number 016-2515-15 slash JMA to IES Sales and Service LLC, Opelika, Florida, for a two-year period. This bid will be utilized as an as-needed basis with the projected expenditure of $120,000 over a two-year period. Is there a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion's second. Any discussion?
I just like to, I was asking a question, it was a test, Mr. Livergood, how many dumpsters do we have here? And I'm sure he has that answer.
There's a lot.
That's what I did.
And as Mr. Livergood is coming down, each dumpster costs roughly $500, just for information. information.
Jeff Livergood, Director of Public Works.
You still have to buy him the beer, by the way.
The dumpsters that we're speaking of are primarily the commercial dumpsters for restaurants. Those are the ones that fail the most quickly. We have about 780 of them. They last us anywhere from five to seven years. By using the repairs, on an average of about $60,000 a year, we're able to extend the life of those. We have additional dumpsters that we use for residential garbage, but those tend to last a lot longer, don't need as many repairs.
When we turn these in, do we get, is it like scrap metal?
Yes.
Or we get a rebate?
There is scrap value at the end of the life. What the primary bid is to replace and repair the bottoms of the containers because that's where the rust and the corrosion begins. Once it's gone and you go to pick it up, it's not a good thing when the bottom falls out. So this will repair those bottoms, and it also repaints it so that they look a bit better.
So we have 780 commercial dumpsters.
Correct. There's a lot. And Commissioner McCray, you're right. It's on an average price for a container is about $500 for, say, a four-yarder. We go as high as eight-yarders. And a roll-off container that's a 30-yarder that's used for commercial can go for as high as several thousand. So these are expensive items, so it's good to maintain them, much as we do everything else.
Dumpster king. Thank you.
Have a motion to second.
Can we talk about that part?
I second.
I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Show the motion unanimous. Okay, public hearings, items A, B, C, D, and E have been.
Able.
Take them off the table and put them back.
No.
Nope.
No, we already did it in February. We already agreed under agenda approval to do it in February, first meeting in February. Takes us to legal, proposed ordinance number 14-035, a second reading and public hearing. Approved the third extension of suspension of the application enforcement of the workforce housing program for a period of one year. City Attorney, you need to read the title.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development and regulations, Chapter 1, Article 5, Section 2, Workforce Housing Program, amending subsection 1, suspension of program, continuing suspension of application enforcement of the workforce housing program for a period of one year, providing for automatic reimplementation of application enforcement upon expiration of the stated time period, providing for conflict severability codification and an effective date.
This is second reading on ordinance number 14035.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to second. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor DeSala?
Aye.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Yes?
Thank you. Next one is requested action by the commission pursuant to section 286.011, parentheses 8, Florida statutes request is made for private attorney-client session of the city commission to discuss pending litigation in the following case, Barney Griffiths plaintiff for City of Boynton Beach defendant. City Attorney, you.
Thank you, Mayor. These types of requests need to come before you in a public setting. What remains here is to determine when the commission would like to conduct the closed-door session.
Is there any time requirement or can we do it before the next meeting?
We could do it before your CRA meeting next week if that's amenable to you.
Emergency?
It's not an emergency, no.
When would the commission like to do it?
It works for me.
Works for you? Before the CRA meeting?
Yeah.
Whatever. I'm just saying, we're here.
Next Tuesday, CRA meeting is 6:30. So how long do you think we'd need?
30 to 45 minutes.
All right. So you want to say 5:45?
5:45.
5:45?
All right, 5:45.
5:45 minutes.
Yeah, okay.
5:45 next Tuesday.
So what we'll, just as a reminder, what will happen is there will be a special commission meeting scheduled because you must start the closed-door session in the meeting. So there'll be a notice of a special meeting for next Tuesday at 5:45.
Got it. Right. Any other business come before the commission? Not? Stand adjourned.
Thank you, sir.